And one of the first people that got past the microphone to ask a question was a woman standing next to me, and she said that she had cancer, but dealing with her private health insurance was more of a distressed problem. So Bernie got up and talked to the people in that crowd and said that they deserved healthcare as a human right. Yeah. There are people in my family and my friends that were going through similar situations, and I'm sure you guys know people that were in those too. And that's why I'm here fighting for Bernie today, because he's the candidate that has fought against the for-profit, for the profit in the healthcare industry for his entire career. And he's the only candidate fighting to end medical debt in this country, too. But we don't just, yeah, we don't just stand with Bernie because he's best with the ideas, you know? We stand with Bernie because he's running on the truth that no president can bring about the fundamental change that we need on their own. No, he knows that we need a mass movement that brings about a crazy amount of people so that our government has no choice but to be on our side. Yeah. You know, one of my favorite moments of the campaign so far was when Bernie talked to 25,000 people in New York City and asked them if you were willing to fight for someone else as just as hard as you're willing to fight for yourself. So Exeter, are you willing to fight for someone else?
Yeah!
Awesome, because I am here to tell you how you can do that. We need to go out and knock on doors to talk to people about our experience with health debt, with medical debt, with the opioid crisis, and with not having health insurance. Because when we go out and we talk to people about our shared struggle, we bring new people into our movement and build community. And that is how we win. Yeah. So I'm inviting you, we have 24 days left until the primary, to fight for my family, for your family, and the people I met in Durham four years ago. So join me in knocking doors tomorrow, the next day, and every day through February 11th. Thank you so much. It's now my honor to introduce Representative Cecilia Rich.
You can call me Representative Rich. I am entering my second year as a Democratic State Representative for Somersworth and Rollinsford. I am 50, married for more than 20 years with two adult children. I've been a writer and publisher, and I was diagnosed with MS here in Exeter at 21. I tried to complete college, tried to find a job. When I arrived for an interview, my walker is my most visible characteristic, usually the positions filled. People were great with advice. What about, they ask? Yes, I've probably tried that medicine, I tell them. I've tried chemo, tried them all. Then I lost my insurance. I currently help my husband with his business. I drive a car with hand controls. I live in a house with a ramp. I wear adult diapers. I support Bernie because he speaks for all people, not just the upper echelon. He cares about people and their needs for universal healthcare, and affordable education, and a living wage to truly support their families. A longtime member of the Democratic Caucus, Bernie connects with the people like no other candidate. Cast your vote for Bernie, and know that a friend is on your side in Washington. With me, with this, I completely support Bernie to be the next president.
Hey. So who's still wearing their long johns from the Women's March? So I'm Andrew Valinsky. I'm the Executive Counselor for District Two, and I'm running for governor. It is my honor and privilege to endorse Senator Bernie Sanders to be our next president. So let me just say, I've had a damn strange couple of days. Two days ago, I was sitting on death row in Georgia with a client of mine who was six hours short of his execution. We'd just done the last hearing the day before, and we're waiting for the final ruling. And I was sitting with my client Jimmy Metters and his family and another lawyer. And five hours before he was scheduled to be executed, we got the order commuting his sentence. So there, there is a Bernie connection to this story. So we were sitting and waiting for the order to come in this makeshift visiting room, sitting in plastic chairs, about a half a dozen of us. Everyone knows I'm from New Hampshire, even though I'm working on this Georgia case, and they ask me about politics in New Hampshire. Go figure. And before I would answer, I said to them, tell me who you're supporting. And so as we went through the other lawyers and the family members, one by one, each of them said, we're supporting Bernie Sanders. And I got to Bernie's, to Jimmy Metter's mother, who's 75, and she said, I'm supporting Bernie because he helps people like us. I can't think of a better reason to support Bernie Sanders than because he supports people like us. And so let me tell you how Bernie would have made a difference. My client Jimmy Metters wasn't born in a hospital because his parents were sharecroppers and couldn't afford the hospital fees. My client had had and has severe learning disabilities that were never addressed in the South Georgia rural schools where he went, dropped out, never read beyond a fourth grade level. His mama, who's now 75, still works at Walmart so she can help support Jimmy's kids, and she has never earned $15 an hour in her life. You want to know how Bernie helps people like us? You think about Medicare for All. You think about supporting public education. You think about $15 an hour. You think about fair access to justice. That's why I support Bernie Sanders, and that it is, that is why it is my privilege to stand here before you today. Education, justice, healthcare, climate action, those are the reasons that I am running for governor. Those are the reasons why you should support Senator Sanders. I'm not going to talk about climate action because you have a real expert coming to speak to you as the next speaker on that topic. Let me introduce you to Naomi Klein. Thank you. Or I can sing and dance for a while.
Hi, everyone. We feeling fiery? Are we winning, gonna win New Hampshire for Bernie Sanders? Ride that all the way to winning the nomination and then the White House? Good. We are counting on you. Now, listen, as you know, we have a reality show star as a president. And a big part of that is because we have corporate media in this country that likes the ratings and the clicks that reality show style politics delivers. They like the brawls, they like the betrayals, they like the manufactured dramas. And in 2015 and 2016, Trump delivered all of that to them on a silver platter, and they could not stop covering it because they got addicted to the highest ratings any of them had ever had. And low and behold, Trump won the nomination and then the presidency. And now, this same media is trying to trump up the same sort of thing even without Trump. And it's not going to work. We are here, we are part of this beautiful movement because we know that even if a game show clown happens to be the president, this is no game. And we are here saying, not me, us, because we know that even if the White House has turned into the set of some twisted, never-ending, nuclear-armed reality TV show, this is in fact not a show. This is reality. And we need a real human being in the White House who gets this, the stakes, the unfathomable stakes of the moment we are living, who gets it in their bones. And that person is Senator Bernie Sanders. Now, I've been writing about the climate crisis for about 15 years, ever since I was in New Orleans, when Hurricane Katrina hit, when that city was still partially underwater, and I was researching a book called The Shock Doctrine. And I have watched this crisis accelerate and all the predictions come true faster than we feared. And we are now in this moment when the natural systems upon which all of life depends are unraveling. We see it right now with Australia's horrific fires and Indonesia's floods. We've seen it closer to home, too, with record-breaking heat, including here in New Hampshire. We've seen unprecedented and fatal fires all over the West, historic storms pounding the East, Puerto Rico decimated by Hurricane Maria, taking more than 3,000 lives. The leading climate scientists in the world have told us that if we want to preserve a habitable future, then what we need to do globally is cut the heat-trapping gases, cut our emissions in half a decade from when a new administration takes office. Just one decade. And to do that, they said, and they put this very clearly, and this is the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, they said, doing this would require unprecedented transformation in virtually every aspect of society. No pressure. Now, I know for some of the young people in the room, and I'm glad to see so many young people in the room, a decade can seem like a long time. But for the rest of us, we know that a decade is really, really short. Think about how little we were able to win the last time the Democrats were in the White House for eight years. How hard we had to work for small incremental changes. How hard so many of us had to fight just to stop more bad things from happening, like building new pipelines, like the Kinder Morgan pipeline that many of you in this room fought off and won that battle. And I thank you for that. And many other, thank you, give yourself a hand for that. And others were arrested trying to stop the Keystone XL Pipeline or the Dakota Access Pipeline. But what we're talking about is not just stopping more bad things from happening. We are talking about this deep, fundamental transformation to agriculture, to energy, to transformation, to our buildings, right? And we just have this decade. But that's not the only thing we have. We also have a chance. We have a lifeline. We have a politician running for presidency with a real shot of winning, who is running to introduce a transformational Green New Deal from day one of his administration. And I want you to picture what it would be like to have a president in the White House who we didn't have to fight and drag kicking and screaming to stop new pipelines and new corporate trade deals that don't mention climate change, you know, or new fracking projects, but who actually was an organizer-in-chief who understood the existential urgency and wanted to lead this transformation with movements driving it from below. Picture what that would look like, how different that would be. We need to believe in it, and we need to make it happen. You know, in this campaign, we sometimes get criticized for talking so much about Bernie's record and Bernie's history, you know, all those old videos that show that Bernie has been fighting for justice, for women's rights, for racial justice, against oligarchs, warning about climate change back in the 80s. And, you know, we do like those old videos, right? And people, some people say, you know, why harp on the past? Why relitigate the Iraq War and the bank bailout? And shouldn't we move on? But, you know, here's what they're missing. I think what many of us see in these videos is someone who has the strength and the fortitude to stand up no matter what the fashions are, but also somebody who has roots in our movements for social change, right? Who knows who he is, who knows what they believe in. And that reminds us that we have roots, too, that we are not inventing this movement of transformation, the movements that will feed into this Green New Deal from scratch. They build on our movements against militarism, for racial justice, for women's rights, for good unionized jobs that we have all been working towards for decades, right? And now the project is to bring all of this work together into a coherent plan for the next economy that will keep us all safe. That's what we see in those videos. And, you know, I mentioned that I've covered a lot of disasters, including a lot of storms. And one of the things that you see in these storms is something really remarkable. You know, when the winds blow, they clear away a lot of the vegetation, they clear away a lot of the, the smaller trees, right? And, and yet somehow, you'll see these, like a huge oak tree that is standing even after the winds have blown through. And you ask yourself, how is that possible? Nothing else is standing. And the reason is simple. It has roots. It has roots. And that root system has protected the land around it. And so when the winds blow, that tree holds on, and it doesn't just protect itself, it actually protects the land around it. And that's why it matters, what we see in those old videos. That's why it matters that we have roots. Because we're in for a rocky future, no matter what we do, right? We are in an economic system that is built to explode. We've got Donald Trump, and, you know, inflating the latest bubbles. There's going to be another economic crisis that we're going to have to weather. We've got, you know, that reality show president who likes to start wars when he's worried about needing a distraction. So we, and we are also in the era of climate disruption. So there are going to be shocks, and there are, there are going to be forces that are going to try to get us off of our course. And we know that even when people try to introduce those small incremental changes, they come up against that gale force, those gale-force winds that try to knock us off course. And that's also why it matters that we have a leader who knows where they stand, right? We deserve a leader like that. We deserve Bernie Sanders. So now, I have a tremendous pleasure to introduce an old friend of mine, somebody who also has deep roots in these movements, who I have been in conversation with about war profiteering, about, about economic profiteering, and, and has been a part of this, this, this campaign, this movement from day one. He's an amazing person and an amazing actor, and his name is John Cusack. Johnny?
How you doing? Hello, New Hampshire. I'm sure you know that a little over 100 years ago, the great poet, while in New Hampshire, wrote of "the road less traveled having made all the difference." So I don't know if Robert Frost was preconceiving Bernie Sanders, but he sure fits that bill. For over 40 years, Senator Sanders has been our guide. He's been our North Star. He's been our hope in a world that often feels like it's collapsing all around us. When I was a young man reading Howard Zinn and considering and absorbing the epic struggle for civil rights that gave us some of the most magnificent and powerful thinkers of our time, powerful writers, fighters, the legacies of Martin Luther King Jr. and Malcolm X, Fannie Lou Hamer, Ella Baker, Angela Davis, Dorothy Day and the Catholic Worker, Eugene Debs, the Barrigan Brothers, public intellectuals like Noam Chomsky, who would go on to influence everybody from Public Enemy to The Clash, and learning about the meaning and the legacy of Franklin Delano Roosevelt and the New Deal from my father, who lived it. And my father's generation working for and waiting for the next movement to finish, finally finish what FDR started. I mean, these were Titanic, Titanic figures and ideas in my head, but as, but in public life, it seemed like their time had passed in the public arena. And in the early 80s, it was, it was pretty barren out there. And then a congressman named Bernie Sanders came onto the scene. And you could immediately see this was a guy who had the future in his eyes. This is a guy who had remarkable courage. And this is a person who had a, a deep and a powerful connection to the truth. He spoke about the absolute need for justice and equality and dignity for all people. And it was a singular voice and unrelentingly powerful in its moral clarity. He offered a principled visionary critique of American empire. He publicly, loudly, and boldly rejected the hideous lie that unchecked greed and predatory capitalism in all of its cruelty was good, that it was in fact the planet's only means of survival, that we must all bow allegiance to this ruling orthodoxy of Earth. He kept telling us there was another, better way. And he kept telling the truth. But he told us what we needed to hear, not what we wanted to hear, because he respects us. When a person respects you, they tell you the fucking truth. Pardon my language. I know I'm off the campaign. I just got fired from the campaign. But when a person respects you, they tell you the truth. Now, sometimes the truth is not always a pleasant thing. Sometimes illusions can be very seductive. But he was unrelentingly honest. And as it is with truth tellers, he was often speaking his truth alone, sometimes famously and literally, literally a lone man in an empty chamber house bearing witness for the victims of another war built and sold on lies. This was a special man. This was a man of vision. This is a man who, in my tradition, they'd say, has the Holy Spirit in him. And this is a fighter that has less quit in him than anybody I've ever seen. And over the years, he spoke, he worked, he organized, he wouldn't go away. He had made himself a most troublesome man for those in power. He was not obedient. He did not bow down to the almighty dollar. He never took that road more traveled, the easier, softer way. That's not who he is. And over the coming 40 years, it became clear to us, a lot of us anyway, that he was one of the true inheritors of the mantle of the great American Voices for Justice. He stands shoulder to shoulder with those in history who have been the moral conscience of our time. And like Dr. King, Bernie Sanders voiced the forbidden connections between capitalism, imperialism, racism, sexism, global warming in the 80s, look it up on YouTube, and the era of endless wars that he saw coming, and of course, the endless war economies Eisenhower warned about. And for 40 years, we've endured this neoliberal class war from above. And for 40 years, Bernie Sanders has been there fighting back. You know what? For four decades, Bernie was right. Again, and again, and again, and again. We have never, ever, ever, in our lifetime, had a candidate, we've never had a candidate that will do more for working people in our lifetimes. In our lifetimes, we have never had a true, a true, honest-to-God In our lifetimes, we have never had a true, a true, honest to God champion of social, economic and climate justice this close to the White House with a movement he's led and built, ready to implement those changes. His critiques of neoliberalism, right? The era, that 40-year era was right and it was true. And his prophetic warnings have come to pass. The planet is faltering in the face of relentless corporate plunder and the billionaires are tightening their stranglehold on public policy and sadly, violence and fascism and poverty is spreading across the globe. The 40-year assault has been defined by these trends and the ruling ideology oversaw the greatest upward redistribution of wealth in this country's history. And in this world upside down, morally bankrupt logic, the government's only job, it seems, is to create optimal conditions for corporate profit, to privatize everything in sight and sell off every inch of the Commonwealth. That's it. Maximize corporate profit at all costs. It'd be a perfect system if there were no human beings. But as Bernie told us, the free markets, well, they're not so free, but corporate welfare is alive and well. And our system, it seems, the overriding principle is socialize the risk, privatize the profit. It's sort of like the gangster movie when the guy says, screw you, pay me. It's an economy of screw you, pay me. The whole deadly political circus is about greed. It's a social contract of fear, cruelty and greed. Unchecked capitalism is the issue. Class is the issue. And now runaway equality has created a world where 62 people own as much wealth as the poorest half of the world's population. And it's very long-winded, but this is just a long-winded way of saying Bernie saw it all. He saw it all coming. And in the age of Twitter and two-second histories, Bernie Sanders has been saying what is only now considered fashionable for 40 years. But he said it for decades when he was greeted with ridicule and hostility and scorn. This is what makes him prophetic. He has the vision and the depth to deal with the problems we have because he brings a lifetime experience to the table. He's literally put his body and soul and his integrity on the line for us his whole life. And I, judging by this turnout, it's pretty easy to say Bernie Sanders is by far the most popular politician in America, right? And the good news is, if you haven't heard, but this very same guy, the guy with the future in his eyes, filled with his spirit, filled with compassion, filled with love, with a fierce love for human beings, happens to be leading a revolutionary movement that is unprecedented in American history, truly. That should have gotten more applause because we have to take back the meaning of the word revolution. We are not talking about a Nike commercial, we're not talking about a can of soda, we're talking about a radical redistribution of economic and political power, a real revolution. And the billionaires are getting nervous and all the corporate media is, they hate us, they don't hate us, they're confused. And it seems like every conceivable power structure on Earth is trying to kill or derail our movement, but we're still here. We know this form of capitalism takes and takes, it takes whatever, whenever, however it wants. It'll take our lives, it'll take our labor, our spirit, our air and water, even our earth. And Bernie respects us enough to tell the truth, the hard truth. We have a 10 to 12-year window to radically transform our energy systems or climate change, predatory capitalism and the endless war economies will rob us of the right to any future at all. And as we can see literally every day, the house is on fire. But as Bernie tells us, this is no time for despair, it's no time for anything but action because if we stand together with him, the future is still indeed unwritten. And there is nothing more powerful than a movement whose time has come. We have never had a movement candidate this close to power with a revolutionary movement. He's led and built, ready to go all the way to change the country and help heal the world. When people of every race, creed, gender, everybody stands together in solidarity, when all of us, whose labor powers this economy, stop the profiteering and tell the billionaires and the corporate tyrannies that it's time to start treating all human beings with respect and dignity. A few examples, a few examples of this more compassionate society. How about healthcare as a human right? Medicare for all. So if you live in this country and you get sick, you don't have to be a rich person to go to the doctor. And if you want to get an education, you don't have to go into a modern day debtors, debtors prison. That's not such a radical ask. Public colleges and universities tuition free, canceling student debt, medical debt relief, guaranteeing a living wage. And most crucially, transforming the economy with the Green New Deal, which will be by necessity, in fact, the biggest economic transformation of the United States since World War II. Has the world caught up to Bernie Sanders' moral vision? Yes? Look, it's up to us, but there are some encouraging signs. The corporate media, as I said, you know, they used to hate us and then they ignored us and then they acted like we weren't there and now they just seem really confused about us. Wall Street hates us. Drug companies hate us. Insurance companies, yeah, hate us. Fossil fuel companies? Military industrial complex? And the 1% of the 1%? No, they don't hate us. You know what it is? They fear us. Do you want, do you want to know why? Because we're going to take on their greed and their corruption and we're going to win. And I'll ask you one more question, then I'll go away and you can hear the great man. Let me ask you one more question. What is 100% minus 1%? I'm not very good at math. 99%. I like our chances. As I said before, it is my profound honor to introduce the next president of the United States, Bernard Sanders. Thank you all. Thank you, Exeter. Thank you all. This is, I think, one of the very largest turnouts we have had in New Hampshire during the entire campaign. Exeter, thank you. Now, I got to tell you, I get nervous after John told you how wonderful and extraordinary I am. Here I am, I ain't any of those things, but we're just trying to do the best that we can. John, thank you for that introduction. John is one of the people, and there are others, who uses their fame to do extraordinary things. And they do that and they got attacked a whole lot. John talked about how I got attacked, but you know, John and others who are standing with us are also getting attacked. So John, thank you. And let me thank Naomi Klein. Now Naomi is modest, but I want you to know that as we tackle what we refer to as the existential threat to not only our country in terms of climate change, but the entire world, Naomi Klein has been a leader in identifying the crisis and coming up with the solutions. Naomi, wherever you are, thank you. And let me thank Cecilia Rich, representative here in New Hampshire, for understanding what we all understand, that healthcare is a human right, not a privilege. Thank Andrew Volinsky for the great work that he has done in this state for educational equality. Andrew, thank you. And let me begin, as we enter the last few weeks of this enormously consequential campaign, let me begin by thanking all of our volunteers here in New Hampshire, in Iowa, in Massachusetts, people who've come up here. From my own state of Vermont, thank you. And from all over the country. The kind of groundswell of volunteer support we're getting is extraordinary. I just read in the paper, I don't know anything about it, I read it in the paper. There was in Sacramento, California, we opened an office and there's so many people came out there to take it outside because of the kind of volunteer support we have out there. So thank you all very much for helping out in this campaign. Now, as all of you know, we have a president of the United States who has been impeached. And all of you know that I am a United States senator from Vermont, that I have a constitutional responsibility to be a juror in that trial. So it goes without saying, as I think all of you know, especially in the last two or three weeks of a hotly contested campaign, I would much rather be here in New Hampshire, much rather be in Iowa and South Carolina and Nevada, but I have a constitutional responsibility, that's the oath of office that I swore to, and I will do my job and be in Washington. But that means, that means for here in New Hampshire and in Iowa and elsewhere, the message of our campaign is going to have to ring very loud and clear. The message of the campaign is us, not me. And if ever was a moment when that has got to be true, it is now. We need your help to carry the ball forward and to win here in New Hampshire. So we are going to do our best. We've had to, needless to say, jiggle our schedule very significantly because I'm going to be spending a whole lot of time in DC. But I will do my best to get out when we can, be here in Iowa on weekends because this is the most important election in the modern history of this country. And together, we are going to do everything we can to make sure that we win this and that we defeat Donald Trump. Now, there is a lot of discussion, appropriately so, about the issue of electability. A lot of Democrats out there, a lot of independents and some Republicans understand that it is absolutely imperative that we defeat the most dangerous president in the modern history of this country. And I want to take just a brief moment, just a brief moment, I'm going to pick up on some of the points that Naomi and John and some of the other speakers raised, to tell you why, in all honesty, I believe that we have the strongest campaign to defeat Trump. That doesn't mean that we are the only campaign that can defeat Trump. And let me say what I think every other Democratic candidate for president would say, is that no matter who wins this hotly contested primary, all of us will unite. Obviously, we hope it's me, but all of us will unite to make sure that Trump is defeated. Now, why do, why do I think we are the strongest campaign? And I will tell you why. To defeat Donald Trump, the simple truth is, we are going to need to have the largest voter turnout in the history of American politics. That's the fact. And that means we are going to have to bring people into the political process who very often have not been involved in the political process. I am very proud, and you should be proud, that our younger generation today is the most progressive younger generation in the history of this country. This is a generation that is anti-racism, anti-sexism, anti-homophobia, anti-zenophobia, anti-religious bigotry. In other words, they are anti everything that Trump is. And I honestly believe, I honestly believe that we are the campaign to bring working people, to bring young people into the political process in a way that has never been done in modern American history. And that is what we are going to have to do in order to defeat Trump. Now, how do you get people involved? Why are so many people alienated from the political process? Why do we have the lowest voter turnout of almost any major country on Earth? And I think the reason is that people understand what's going on in America today, but the political establishment does, as John Cusack, Cusack just said, does not speak truth to power. And it's time we did that. American people are not dumb. They know where the power rests. They know the power of the 1%. They know the power of Wall Street. When you got a half a dozen banks having assets of more than $10 trillion, half a dozen banks, they know the power of the insurance industry who will spend hundreds of millions of dollars to deny Americans the right to have healthcare as a human right. They know the power and the corruption of the drug companies who charge us sometimes 10 times more for the medicine we need as do the people of other countries. They know, the American people know, the lies coming from the fossil fuel industry, the denial about what they are doing to our country and the planet. They know the power of the military industrial complex, which gets us involved in endless wars at huge expenditure of human life and of money. They know the power of the prison industrial complex. They know the absurdity of having a tax system in which major corporations making billions of dollars a year pay nothing in federal income tax. So the American people do know what's going on. And it's time that we stood with the working families of this country to take on the corporate elite, to take on the 1%. And to create an economy, it's not radical stuff. This is what the American people want. An economy and a government that works for all of us, working families, the middle class, low-income people, and not just wealthy campaign contributors. Now, I have been, in this campaign, I have been all over this state and in many, many states throughout this country. And people are sick and tired about a corrupt political system in which billionaires buy elections. Now, we in New England, Vermont, New Hampshire, we have town meetings. It's called one person, one vote. That's the kind of democracy we will achieve, no longer allowing big money interests to buy elections. We're going to overturn this disastrous Citizens United Supreme Court decision. And we are going to end this horrific voter suppression that's going on all over the country. And we are going to move toward public funding of elections. But it is not only, not only a corrupt political system which angers and frustrates the American people, they know- They know that this economy is rigged, and it is rigged big time. They know that it is morally and economically unacceptable when three people in America own more wealth than the bottom half of American society. They know that it is wrong when 49% of all new income goes to the top 1%. And tonight, in America, over 500,000 people will be homeless, including 30,000 veterans. That is not the economy the American people want. They don't want an economy which benefits just the rich. They want an economy that works for all of us, our kids and our parents. What does that mean? What does that mean? What do we talk about an economy working for all of us, not just the 1%? For a start, it says to the 1%, it says to the billionaire class, it says to corporate America that at a time of massive unprecedented income and wealth inequality, yes, you are gonna start paying your fair share of taxes. It says that in New Hampshire and any state in this country, if you work 40 hours a week, you're not gonna be living in poverty. I have talked to too many workers in New Hampshire, in Iowa, all across America, trying to raise kids on 10, 11, 12 bucks an hour. You can't raise a family on those starvation wages. We're gonna raise that minimum wage to a living wage at least 15 bucks an hour. And when we talk about wages, we are gonna end the absurdity of women making 79 cents on the dollar compared to men. It is not a radical idea to suggest that we have equal pay for equal work. Women deserve the whole damn dollar, not just 79 cents. And brothers and sisters, brothers and sisters, if we're gonna grow the middle class in this country, we need to grow the trade union movement. Workers, workers all over this country wanna join unions. They're prevented from doing so. We have a proposal that will double the number of workers in unions in the next four years. And when we talk about an agenda that works for the working families of this country, you've got to talk about education. We are the wealthiest country in the history of the world. And yet, working families in Vermont, in New Hampshire, Iowa, all over this country cannot find quality, affordable childcare. Mom goes to work, dad goes to work. They deserve to know that their children are being taken care of in the best ways possible. The psychologists tell us, as everybody here knows, that 0 through 4 are the most important years of human intellectual and emotional development. Instead of spending billions of dollars on nuclear weapons, let's invest in our children universal, high-quality, affordable childcare. Couple of months ago, couple of months ago, I was here in New Hampshire, meeting with some educators. And they said, Bernie, we have school districts right here in New Hampshire, not one of the poorest states in the country, but right here in New Hampshire, where teachers are starting off with a salary of less than $29,000 a year. If we believe, as we all do, that education is an essential part of being human, if we all understand, as we do, that we live in a competitive global economy, we need to have the best educated population on earth. So, instead of giving tax breaks to large corporations, we are gonna triple funding for low-income Title I schools. And instead of seeing teachers, instead of seeing teachers leave the profession after 20, 30 years because they have to take money out of their own pockets to buy school supplies, I want to make sure that every teacher in this country earns at least $1,000 a year. And I want the young people here, I want the young people here to think about becoming educators because there is no work that is more important than that. When we change our national priorities, when we change our values, and when we understand how important education is, I want the young people on college, the best and the brightest, to say, you know what? I am so proud and so excited that I'm gonna become a teacher and be able to influence thousands of kids. And when we talk about education, we have got to make sure that every kid here in New Hampshire, in Vermont, all over this country understands that if he or she takes their schoolwork seriously and does well, that no matter the income of their families, they will be able to get a higher education. This is not a radical idea. This exists already in countries around the world. And by the way, it used to exist here in the United States. I don't know how many people know, 50, 60 years ago, some of the great public universities in California, in New York, and many state colleges were virtually tuition-free. And our job is, and this is a high priority for us, to make every public college and university in America tuition-free. And by the way, by the way, four years ago, when I came here to New Hampshire and I talked about it, that was seen as a radical idea. Well, you know what's happened to go the last four years? State after state, city after city, county after county have been moving in exactly that direction. We're gonna make it applicable to every state in this country. And here's something else we're gonna do. And this requires kinda thinking outside of the box. 11 years ago, the United States Congress, against my vote, gave huge tax breaks, bailed out Wall Street. You all remember? The crooks on Wall Street who nearly destroyed our economy were bailed out and received, among other things, trillions of dollars in zero-interest loans. Just two years ago, Trump and his friends gave over a trillion dollars in tax breaks to the 1% and large corporations. If this country can bail out the crooks on Wall Street, bail out the billionaires who run multinational corporations, if we can do that, we can cancel all student debt in America. For my entire adult life, I have believed, and this maybe has something to do with my background, coming from a working-class family, I have always believed that healthcare is a human right. And that means, you know, some, you know, rich have advantages and they buy big houses and big cars, and that's fine. But on issues like healthcare, every person in this country has the right to go to a doctor when they need to go to that doctor, and they have a right to know that if they become seriously ill, they're not gonna be drowned in a huge, with a huge amount of medical debt. We are right now, and I want everybody to know this and what this campaign is about, we are taking on the healthcare industry. That's the insurance companies, the drug companies, the medical equipment suppliers, who last year made $100 billion in profit. We are taking on Trump and his lies and the entire Republican Party. We are taking on the Democratic establishment. But, at the end of the day, this current healthcare system is so cruel, is so dysfunctional, is so wasteful, that we will win this fight and finally have a Medicare-for-All Single-Payer program. And I want you to understand why the American people will support Medicare for All. They know that there is something insane when we are spending twice as much per person on healthcare as the people of any other country, twice as much. And for spending $11,000 for every man, woman, and child, you know what we got? We got 87 million Americans who are uninsured or underinsured. We got 30,000 Americans who die each year because they don't get to a doctor when they should because they're uninsured. We pay by far the highest prices in the world for prescription drugs. And I'll tell you what else we get. What we get out of this system are 500,000 people a year going bankrupt because they came down with a serious illness. I want you to think about it. If somebody blows their money on a business venture, you blow your money on a gambling casino and you go bankrupt, that's one thing. But people in America should not go bankrupt because they are struggling with cancer. That is immoral, that is a disgrace. And I want everybody to be clear. I want everybody to be clear because there'll be a ton of misinformation. We are taking on the whole healthcare industry, and they will be spending all kinds of money in New Hampshire and Iowa, all over this country, trying to defend their profiteering and their greed. So, let me be very clear what Medicare-for-All is about. And I wish I could tell you I was so smart that I came up with this idea. I did not. We are stealing ideas from Canada and other countries around the world. Here's what Medicare-for-All means. It means that we eliminate all premiums for workers and their employers. Premiums, gone. It means we end all co-payments so people can go to the doctor when they need to and not worry about having to come up with the $100 that they need. It means that we end one of the most insane concepts I have ever heard of. We get used to it, but it is insane. Deductible. Think about a deductible. You know, you think that when you pay a fortune for health insurance, you should be able to walk into the doctor when you want. Well, not quite. You got people in this room who have $5,000 deductibles, yes? People who have $10,000 deductibles? What that means is that when you get sick, you're gonna have to figure out how you take money out of your own pocket before you can go to the doctor. And what happens if you're a working-class person and you don't have a lot of money in the bank? Well, you don't go to the doctor. The concept of a deductible is an absurd concept. We end that. We are going, we are going to end all out-of-pocket expenses. Under our proposal, nobody in America, because we are gonna take on the greed and the corruption of the pharmaceutical industry and force them to lower prices so we're not paying more than anybody, any other country around the world. Under our plan for Medicare-for-All, nobody pays more than $200 a year for prescription drugs. Now, Medicare, Medicare is a strong program today. It is the most popular health insurance program in the country, but it is not perfect. What we do is expand Medicare to cover, cover all basic healthcare needs. What does that mean? It means, last I heard, that dental care was a healthcare need. We cover dental care. It is absurd that you got a whole lot of people in this country who cannot afford hearing aids. We cover hearing aids. We cover eyeglasses. We cover home healthcare so that people can stay home and not be forced to go into a nursing home. What we do under our Medicare-for-All plan, it's a four-year transition. First year, we expand Medicare. We lower the eligibility age from 65 down to 55. Year two, down to 45. Year three, down to 35. Year four, everybody is in. Now, there is a lot of discussion, and it's a good discussion, it's a fair discussion. How do we pay for this? But before we talk about how we pay for it, we gotta talk about how we pay for healthcare right now, which is an incredibly regressive approach. So, those people who are critical of Medicare-for-All and how we pay for it, they gotta defend the following. The median family income in America is about $60,000 a year. That person, right in the middle of the economy, makes about $60,000. That family is paying, out of their $60,000 income, $12,000 a year for healthcare. 20% of their income, some are paying more, some are paying less. But on average, people in the middle class are paying about 20% of their incomes on healthcare. I think that that is grossly unfair and regressive. So, we fund Medicare-for-All in a variety of proposals, mostly asking the wealthy and powerful to start paying their fair share. But I would be not telling you the truth if I said, well, for everybody, healthcare is gonna be free. Ain't the case. Healthcare is expensive, we gotta pay for it. What our key proposal for working people is about is a 4% income tax exempting the first $29,000 of income. That means, if you are that average family, $60,000 a year, you're paying 4% of $31,000. That is $1,200 a year for comprehensive healthcare. And that's a lot better. Because wherever I go, in New Hampshire, we've been meeting after meeting after meeting. All over this country, people are telling me they just cannot afford the outrageous cost of healthcare. So, we deal with that in a pretty fundamental way. And I wanna say a word about another issue, and Naomi Klein talked about it a moment ago. This is an issue, the more I study it, the more frightened I become. And that is obviously the crisis facing our country and the entire world regarding climate change. And here is what is scary. Scientists for decades have been telling us about climate change and about what fossil fuels are doing to our planet. That's not new news. But what is new news is the scientists are now telling us that they have underestimated the degree, the speed, the severity in which climate change is ravaging our country and the entire planet. They have underestimated the problem. What we are seeing now is an acceleration of the melting of the polar ice caps. We're seeing warming of the ocean at a rate faster than had been anticipated, which means rising sea levels. If we, as a people, and I mean that the entire world, do not get our act together, you're gonna see major American cities like Miami, like New Orleans, like Charleston, South Carolina, like New York City and others, either partially or very significantly underwater by the end of the century. If we do not get our act together, you're gonna see countries like Bangladesh, Vietnam, parts of China significantly under... parts of China significantly underwater. What we are seeing with the acidification of the ocean is the wiping out of fish, and millions and millions of people depend upon fish in order to stay alive. What we are seeing are more extreme weather disturbances. A couple of months ago, you all saw Venice, Italy, one of the most beautiful cities in the world, underwater. Houston, Texas, underwater. Expect more of those extreme weather disturbances and greater severity. What we are seeing is more drought, which means that farmers in the Midwest and elsewhere and all over the world will have a shorter growing season, and the quality of the food they produce will deteriorate, causing all kinds of problems in terms of lack of food. What the United Nations is telling us is that when climate change accelerates, you're gonna see hundreds of millions of people becoming climate refugees, forced to flee the communities they live in because they can't find clean water and they can't find land to grow their crops. And when millions of people migrate to another country, it raises the specter of terrible international tension. You're gonna see the spread of disease because bacteria thrive on warm weather. So you're gonna see malaria and other diseases spread to parts of the world where they currently are not. Now, what this crisis is about? I wish I could tell you that this crisis was simply about the United States having to do the right thing. And we do. We are the most powerful nation on Earth. We have got to lead the world. We don't need a president who denies the reality of climate change. We need a president who leads the world in transforming our energy system. And as you have heard from Naomi and others, the foundations for a rational climate change approach is in fact the Green New Deal. And what that means, what that means is that the time is now to tell the fossil fuel industry in this country and around the world that we will not allow them to destroy this planet for their short-term profits. It means, it means that we are going to have to transform our energy system in a very, very rapid way, as quickly as humanly possible, away from fossil fuel to energy efficiency and sustainable energies like wind, solar, geothermal, and other sustainable energies. And I want to applaud, as I was driving in here, I saw that Exeter High School has a kind of large panel, a kind of a large solar panel system over there. So congratulations, Exeter High School. That's what we have to do all over America. We've gotta transform our transportation system. We gotta transform our agricultural system. We gotta retrofit all the buildings in New Hampshire and in Vermont to make them energy-efficient. And by the way, when we do all of that, we will create up to 20 million good-paying jobs. Now, I have been criticized, I have been criticized because the proposal I brought forth, which is the most sweeping, comprehensive climate change proposal any candidate for federal office has ever brought forth. I've been criticized by people who say, "Bernie, that's a lot of money you're proposing." They're right. It is. But I want every person here, every person in the country, to think about the alternative. To think about the alternative. How much is too much when we are fighting to save the planet? This is not just an environmental issue. This is a moral issue at the deepest level. If we love our children as we do, and I've got three grandchildren here today, and I got seven beautiful grandchildren. If we love our children and our grandchildren, if we love future generations, we have a moral responsibility to make sure that this planet does not become unhealthy and uninhabitable. We have a moral responsibility to stand up to the greed and the lies of the fossil fuel industry, and that is together what we will do. And when we talk about political transformation, how do we make this country different? How do we make it better? How do we make it more just? How do we have a government based on the principles of love and compassion and justice? When we look at the world that way, we know we have got to fundamentally reform a broken and racist criminal justice system. And that means, that means we will end the international embarrassment of the United States having more people in jail than any other country on Earth. It means that we will get to the root causes of the problem and invest in our young people in jobs and education, not jails and incarceration. It means that we will end all private prisons and detention centers in America. Corporations should not make huge profits locking up fellow Americans. Today, in America, hundreds of thousands of people are in jail without having been convicted of anything. Do you all know that? They are in jail. They were arrested, they were charged with a crime, but they can't afford the $500 or $1,000 bail they need to get out of jail. And they're in jail tonight. 20% of our jail population, 400,000 people. We will end cash bail in America. And I'll tell you what else we are gonna do, and it's long overdue to do this. We are gonna end the so-called war on drugs. And we are going to legalize marijuana in every state in the country. Here's a question. Let me ask you all a question. How many of you know anybody who has been arrested for possession of marijuana? Raise your hand. Look at that. That's right. This is the same response I get all over America. What we are going to do is expunge the records of those arrested for possession of marijuana. And when we talk about broken systems, it's not just criminal justice, it is a very broken and racist criminal immigration system as well. On our first day in office, through executive order, we will undo all of the racist immigration executive orders written by Donald Trump. On our first day in office, we will reestablish legal status to the 1.8 million young people and their parents eligible for the DACA program. Under our administration at the border, federal agents will not be snatching babies from the arms of their mothers or throwing children into cages. And together, under our administration, we will bring this country together in their strong bipartisan majority support for comprehensive immigration reform and a path toward citizenship. Under our administration, gun safety policy will not be written by the NRA, but the American The American people are very clear, whether in rural states like New Hampshire and Vermont, urban areas like LA or New York City, the American people are very clear, we need to expand and have universal background checks. We need to end the gun show loophole. We need to end the straw man provision. And interestingly enough, the American people, by a pretty good majority, now believe something that I have believed for decades, is that we have got to end the sale and distribution of assault weapons in this country. Earlier today, I was at a women's march in Portsmouth. And I wanna thank, you know, the women of this country for helping lead the opposition to Trump at every level. Do remember, don't forget, that literally the day after Trump was inaugurated, millions of women in this country and around the world stood up and said, "You know what, Mr. President? We are not gonna tolerate your sexism, your racism, your homophobia, and your xenophobia." You know, as a senator, I am on the floor of the Senate fairly often, listening to speeches. And many of my Republican colleagues get onto the floor of the Senate, and this is the mantra they have. They say, "We believe in small government, we're conservatives, we believe in getting the government off of the backs of the American people." And I say to those so-called conservatives, if you believe in getting the government off the backs of the American people, understand that it is women who have the right to control So my promise to you is that I will never nominate any individual to the Supreme Court or other federal courts who is not 100% pro Roe v. Wade. All right. Brothers and sisters, let me conclude by saying this. We live in an unprecedentedly difficult moment in American history. We have a president who is not only, and it gives me no pleasure to say this, who is not only a pathological liar, but who is running one of the most corrupt administrations in the history of our country. We are facing an existential threat in terms of climate change. We have more income and wealth inequality today than at any time since the 1920s. We have a political system which allows billionaires to buy elections, while at the same time, half of the people in this country are living paycheck to paycheck, wondering how they're gonna be able to put food on the table, go to the doctor, or get their car repaired if it breaks down. This is the moment in American history where we need to stand up to the corporate elite, who by the way, and the 1%, who over the last 30 years have seen a $21 trillion increase in their wealth, while the bottom half of Americans have actually seen a decline in their wealth. This is the moment when the 99% have got to come together. We have got to reject Trump's desire to divide us up based on the color of our skin or where we were born. We have got to stand together around an agenda that works for all of us, not just the people on top. And let me say to you something that I think no other candidate for president will tell you, maybe ever has told you. And that is, here is the truth. You know, John Q. Sackman once said, "Tell the truth, let me tell you the truth." Here's the truth. No president, not Bernie Sanders or anybody else, can do it alone. Because we are taking on the extraordinary power of Wall Street, insurance companies, drug companies, fossil fuel industries, military industrial complex, prison industrial complex, 1%. People who own the media. They have incredible power. And what this campaign is about is not just beating Trump, as important as that is. It is transforming this country. And the only way we do it, the only way that real change in America has ever taken place, think about history, think about the labor movement of workers coming together to fight for justice. Think about the women's movement, women and their male allies coming together to say, "Women will not be second-class citizens in America." Think about the civil rights movement and the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whose birthday we celebrate on Monday. And what King understood, one of the great leaders in American history, is that you can't just do it from the top. He was an organizer, millions of people standing up for racial justice. Think about the gay movement and the gay community standing up, fighting back with their straight allies. Think about the environmental movement, young people all over this planet standing up and fighting back. So what this campaign is about, it's about beating Trump, yeah. But it's about more than that. It is about understanding that when we stand up by the millions and demand economic justice, social justice, racial justice, environmental justice, that when we stand together by the millions, there is nothing that can stop us. All right. This is a much larger, usually we do town meetings that are kind of, you know, a couple of hundred people. This is much bigger. But what I wanna do is if we can, take a few questions, if anybody has something. All right, I see a gentleman over there. We have some mics. Staff, do we got a mic? All right, there's a mic coming, raise your hand. Yeah. Okay, right there. Yeah.
Hi Bernie, it's an honor.
Hold the mic close to your mouth.
Hi, my name is Daniel, I'm from Massachusetts. It's an honor to hear you speak, Bernie. I had a question about climate change. You mentioned that in order to make any real lasting change, it's gonna take a global effort.
Yes.
We can make swift action here in this state.
Yes.
I was wondering, as president, what is your plan to get other major countries, other polluters, to buy in?
Okay, thank you very much, Daniel. Obviously, we have to take care of our own business first, and that means taking on the fossil fuel industry in this country and transforming our own energy system. But as I said earlier, and as everybody knows, climate change is a global issue, not just an American issue. And what we need is leadership in this country, the most powerful country on Earth, to speak to the people and the governments, but speak to the people in China, where they have huge pollution problems, terrible, in India, in Pakistan, in Russia, and all over this world. And here is, you wanna hear a radical idea, you guys? Here's a radical idea, that maybe we convince the world, countries around the world, that instead of spending $1.8 trillion a year on weapons of destruction designed to kill each other, maybe we pool our resources and stand together against our common enemy, which is climate change. Okay. Okay, I see, yeah, right here, young lady, right here.
So with so many people...
Hold the mic to your mouth.
Is this working?
Yep, that's better.
With so many people in the race for the Democratic nomination, as the field narrows, it's gonna kind of, I think, turn to infighting. What is your strategy for keeping the movement going and keep building support without attacking...
Good, thank you very much. That's exactly what the American people want. Very often, and this saddens me very much, you know, we have a president who attacks the media every day, calls them fake news and enemies of the people, which is disgusting, which is trying to undermine American democracy. But do understand that media often wants and exaggerates conflict. All right, if I slipped on a banana peel here, that would be the major story in television tonight. True, it would be. Not climate change, not healthcare, not education. So, you know, media has its shtick of what they want to do, we have ours. I think the best thing for all Democratic candidates, and what we're gonna do in our campaign, as you heard me tonight, you didn't hear me say a word about any of the other candidates, we are gonna focus on the issues of the working families of America and bring them together. Okay, okay, okay. All right, there's a woman right here. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Here's the mic, all right.
Hello, thank you. Right now, I'm currently a nursing student. I was just wondering how a single payer plan would be beneficial for nurses and doctors as well.
Thank you, I'll tell you how. Everyone hear the question? First of all, thank you very much for going into nursing. We have a crisis in this country in terms of nursing. We don't have enough nurses. Truthfully, we don't have enough doctors. We don't have enough teachers, and that's something we have got to deal with when together we are in the White House. Now, first of all, I am happy to tell you that the National Nurses Union, the largest nurses union in America, has endorsed our campaign. And why did they endorse our campaign? They endorsed our campaign because those nurses, and I think a majority of nurses, understand that in order to do their job as healthcare providers, we need a Medicare-for-all single-payer system. Now, how would you feel when you become a nurse, when somebody comes into the office and you find that that person is much sicker than he or she should be because they didn't have any health insurance, they couldn't get to the office when they should? How would you feel if that person, doctor wrote out a prescription, and that person couldn't fill the prescription because the price of medicine is so outrageously high? What you would feel is, how are you doing your job? How can you do your job that people are not coming into the office when they should, are not getting the kinds of therapies they need because they can't afford it? So I think when nurses understand, when more and more doctors understand, to do their job, we need a system which says that anybody in America goes to the doctor or the nurse when you're sick and gets all of the help you need regardless of your income. That's why nurses are supporting us. All right, I see a young lady right here, or is a young... Yeah. Tell us your name, tell us how old you are.
My name is Zoe, I'm nine, and my question is, as a child, since I can't vote yet, how can I help to get you elected?
Is it your name, Zoe? Okay. Well, Zoe, what you could do is, are you going to school around here?
I'm in homeschool.
Okay. Well, what you could do is talk to kids your age and tell the kids to tell their parents that they should vote for me. Okay. Yeah, I see a hand right over there. Yes, sir. Yeah, here's the mic coming.
There was an interesting article today released by the New York Times about ClearView, which is a facial...
About what?
ClearView, which is a facial recognition company that's being utilized. I'm wondering how, right now, it seems like it's us versus Silicon Valley, and I wonder how the, your cabinet in the presidency would be able to position themselves to have the government be innovative and work for our needs that you're being, that you're expressing tonight.
Are you talking about facial recognition?
In technologies, really.
All right, look, let's be clear about this one. Maybe I'm old-fashioned, hold it, one minute, one minute. Maybe I am old-fashioned and conservative. Not really. But I do believe in the right of privacy, you know? And what is very clear, what is very clear is in the last 20 or 30 years, there has been a mass technological assault on people's right to privacy. It is the government, it is the corporate world that knows everything that you have bought, probably knows how much money you got in the bank, where you're spending your money, maybe they have your healthcare records, maybe they have your banking records. And the truth is that the Congress has been way, way, way behind this, lagging further behind this assault on our privacy. So we need to have a very serious discussion with the high-tech companies, whether it's Facebook or Google, whoever it may be, and begin the process, this is not easy stuff, of protecting the privacy of the American. You have a right to live your life without somebody knowing every damn thing that you have done. So that's a major issue. Okay. All right, I see a hand right in the back, the gentleman right there with the hat on, yeah. With the, yeah, way in the back there, yeah. Get the mic?
Yes, I do, thank you. I'm a teacher, actually, my friend Adam over here is a teacher as well. Thank you. We've been recently, recently teaching our students about Iran and the issues we've had with the funding of Iraq and Saudi Arabia, et cetera. How do you, how do you plan to attack that issue now that people are in fear, you know, and then how can we safely cut military spending and withdraw troops and not fund Saudi Arabia?
Look, you know, foreign policy is a complicated and difficult issue. I don't have and nobody has any magical solutions, but this is what I do know. I know something that very few people will tell you who are running for office. This is kind of embarrassing, but you gotta say it. The two major foreign policy disasters of my lifetime were Vietnam and Iraq. In Vietnam, my generation, we lost 59,000 soldiers. And there is some evidence that we have lost tens of thousands more who came home from that war, got into drugs and despair and whatnot. And the damage done to Vietnam, we don't know how many hundreds of thousands or millions of people were killed in that war. We dropped more napalm and bombs on that country than any time in history. Total disaster. That war was based on a series of lies. A so-called Gulf of Tonkin Resolution. It was a lie. We got into a war which did so much harm to our country, cost us so much money, so much pain all over Asia, based on a lie. When I was a kid, I marched in the streets against Vietnam, that's what I did. Now, later, in 2002, 2003, I wasn't a kid, I was a member of the United States Congress. And I can remember very distinctly the lies, the distortions of intelligence that came from Dick Cheney, came from Donald Rumsfeld, the Secretary of Defense, that came from the entire Bush administration. And they were saying, if we do not invade Iraq, if we don't get rid of Saddam Hussein, who was in fact a very bad guy, a murdering thug, but if we don't invade them, they will develop nuclear weapons or chemical weapons which could be a disaster and hurt us in the United States. That was a lie. And as a result of those lies, the United States invaded Iraq. 4,500 brave men and women died from America, died in that war. Hundreds of thousands of Iraqis were killed. And right now, after 18 years of that war, 17 years of that war, the Iraqi government voted a few weeks ago to throw the United States of America out of that country. A total waste, leading to massive destabilization in the region and so much pain. So to answer your question in a very general sense, as president of the United States, I will help lead the world to do everything possible to resolve international conflict through negotiations, not war. We have spent trillions of dollars. If you're an educator here, you know we need money for our kids. We have the highest rate of poverty among children of almost any major country on earth. We should invest in our infrastructure. We don't need to spend trillions more on endless wars. Now, none of this is easy, and I'm not telling you I or anybody else has a magical solution. But we will tell Iran and Saudi Arabia that we are sick and tired of their conflict. Sit down in a damn room, we will help you work it out. We'll tell Israel and the Palestinians, sit down, work it out. Now, that's not easy, and I know it's easier to say than to do. But at the end of the day, as I said earlier, throughout the world, in our own country, people sleeping on the street, kids not getting the education they need, infrastructure collapsing, kids not able to afford to go to college, leaving school deeply in debt, all over the world, people living in abysmal poverty. You know what? As a world, we could do a lot better than spend $1.8 trillion on weapons of destruction. All right, we've got to get, we've got to get to Manchester. But let me just, let me just say this. Let me just say this. Thank you so much for being here, and I want to just tell you what you know. This is an extraordinary moment, not only in American history, but in world history. What happens here in this election impacts our kids, future generations, and the entire planet. We got three weeks left to go to this primary here in New Hampshire, which is of enormous consequence. We think we're gonna do well in Iowa, we think with your help, we got a shot to win here in New Hampshire. But as I mentioned at the beginning, I'm gonna be stuck in Washington for longer than I wish, so I'm gonna need your help. Please go out, knock on doors with our people, get on the phone, do everything you can to help us win here in New Hampshire. Thank you all very much.